Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, August 2nd, or 3rd? Ever today is 2nd. Let me remind everyone who is going to speak to the board to sign in on the clipboard that's there in front of you and turn on the microphones and speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting is August 16th at 7:00 PM in this room, the Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see, we've got a full board, so we're not going to use any of our alternates tonight.
Okay.
We've got all of our full members. And with that, that brings us to the first item on our agenda, which is our Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Robert?
Just by the memo in your packet, the projects that you're going to see tonight, I think actually you already declared one of those is not regional impact, but the other one, Portofino, is staff doesn't feel is regional impact.
Couple of tables on the sidewalk doesn't mean we got to notify Bedford.
No, you're all right.
Call them on. What's the will of the board with respect to the recommendation for a regional impact determination on Portofino's?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We agree with the community development staff that the Portofino cycle is not of regional impact.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Council Koenig. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to uphold that. Robert, is there anything else from Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report standpoint?
Nope, we have nothing.
Any members of the board have any questions for staff? Seeing none, let's move on to item three on our agenda, which is Joseph Mitchell Esquire. As the applicant and Nicholas Dulamas as the owner, review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to convert a single-family residence to a multifamily residence. The parcel is located at 565 DW Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Oxford Conservation District, elderly housing overlay districts, and the Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 6D1 Lot 123. The agenda item was continued from our July 19th meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Just that the applicant is requesting a waiver for parking. The amount shown, six spaces, is too shy of the number required by regulations, which is eight. And if you look at the plan, there is an existing block wall that shows on the property line with the Merrimack House of Pizza. This applicant owns both properties, but it does cross over the property line, so the board may want to consider that in its discussion, maybe requesting an easement or having the applicant relocate it all onto one property.
Thank you, Robert. And for clarification, this applicant's already been to the zoning board and received it?
Yes, all the variances that are necessary have been received, yeah.
Okay, so the actual use of the building as a multifamily apartment is already approved by them and not before us?
That's correct.
We're just dealing with our planning board type issues?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, please introduce yourself, even though I already did.
I'm Joseph Mitchell. I'm the attorney in town. I represent Mr. Dulamas.
Hit the button on your microphone.
How's that better?
Pull it a little closer to you.
I got a green light.
There you go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joe Mitchell. I'm an attorney here in town. I represent Mr. Dulamas with his application before the board this evening. Mr. Dulamas owns the property at 565 Daniel Webster Highway and has owned it for about 25 years. When he originally purchased it, it was, it's a single-family dwelling and consisting of one floor and a full cellar. When he originally bought it, it was occupied by a family on the main floor, and there was an in-law apartment in the cellar. And what he's seeking to do is to take the cellar, which has access from the back of the building, and make it into two studio apartments. There are two separate entrances. There's a window beside each entrance, and he feels that this will best serve his clientele by having two separate studio apartments. He's asking for a waiver of a full site plan review. Essentially, there are no changes to the exterior of the building. The front, sides, and the back are staying the same. We are delineating parking in the rear, which was not done before, but we don't see the need to have a full site plan review if it pleases the board. We're also asking, as was said by Mr. Price, we're asking for a reduction in the required number of spaces for parking from eight spaces to six. The lot is an undersized lot because it's subdivided a very long time ago before we had the regulations that we have today, and there is just not much room for parking on this premises. But we figure that the two spaces in the front are adequate for the main floor, this aside on Daniel Webster Highway, and the four at the rear of the building will be adequate for the two studio apartments. We're also asking for a waiver on the requirement for a fire sprinkler system. This is a multifamily dwelling, and as such, it may be required to have a sprinkler system installed in it. We think that it may be a little bit excessive on a property like this because, for a couple of reasons. First of all, the walls of the area we're concerned in, they're cellar walls and they're concrete, so we don't think there's much of a need to have this area sprinkled against the fire, although that's always a possibility, but the walls being concrete will not be at all combustible. Secondly, for a small building like this, we don't think it's economically feasible. These are apartments that are going to go to people who are of medium to low income. They're meant to be affordable, and we cannot probably bear the expense of a full sprinkler system for the amount of rent that we'll be getting for apartments of this type. And thirdly, we don't think the sprinkler system is really needed because there are no corridors of any kind. There is direct access to the outside. There is a problem with having a second access and egress from each unit. There's only one way in, one way out. But we feel the distances are very short because it's a studio apartment. There is no corridor that has to be accessed, and somebody can get out of there fairly quickly. So we're hoping that you can also grant us a waiver of that as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell, for offering the presentation. The first order of business for the board is to determine whether the application's complete. Are there any questions necessary to make that determination by members of the board? Desiree, you had a hand up?
Not for that.
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept that the application is complete enough for us to considerate.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion. We agree that the application is complete and ready for us to consider the details.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Desiree. Any discussion on completeness? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to determine it complete. Any discussion? Questions for the applicant? Desiree?
I do not believe we can waive the fire sprinkler requirement. That's going to be something, it's going to be the fire department and the building department, but as an architect, I don't recommend that at all because you have one exit out of there. I'd be comfortable with one exit with sprinklers, I mean, if it was up to us. But with just one, I think it would be a hard sell for the fire department, but they're going to be the ones that review it. I don't think we'd waive hers for that.
My understanding of the process is that the fire department's recommendations are imposed on the applicant by a condition of our approval, and so I think that's what they would be getting at. I don't know, in terms of meeting building codes and getting certificate of occupancy, whether that does relieve you from any other regulation by the fire department. I wouldn't think that it did, but either way, I don't know if the board's, if it's the will of the board to even go in that direction anyway, so we may not have to explore that question. I do have a question about sprinklers, though, in that these are two apartments below, and I guess the upper was originally the residence for the owner, but it's technically an apartment as well. Would that have to be sprinkled?
Our understanding, sir, is that the entire building would have to be sprinkled. Yes, sir.
Okay, so it would have to be all three apartments, and we really only know about the, as far as drawings go, what the bottom ones look like?
Mr. Chairman, I understand what Attorney Mitchell has said, but if we consider the state rules on ADUs, and whilst you could say this isn't quite an ADU, ADU requirements by state requirement are for two means of access. I mean, I added an ADU to our house when my mother-in-law was around, and we had to make sure, to the trouble of putting in a second access. I do not see that we can go away from that. I think a second access is required. I think there are two. If you look at the sort of situation of things burning, we've seen enough incidents in the last few months. I'm sorry, I say sprinklers and I say a second access.
I think the second access is probably part of the fire department's recommendations to us. I'm sorry, I stumbled over that word, recommendations. I don't know that it would be a door as much as a egress window.
Yeah, I agree. A window that could be knocked out. It's got to come out.
Do we have the recommendations from the fire department? Robert, was the egress window recommended?
Yeah, it's attached in the memo that I have. Everything under page three, under the general and subsequent conditions, all came from Captain Manuelli.
So, under number?
Four.
Secondary means of egress.
Four is for the egress, Mr. Chairman.
Number three says a fire alarm system that isn't necessarily a sprinkler system.
Two.
Two, okay.
Three says the sprinklers, and four says secondary means of access.
Okay. The only thing the applicant's asking for a waiver of, though, is the sprinkler bit.
Yeah, and that's not in the board's regulation. It's not up to the board to waive that. I feel like it's in state law. I'm trying to look that up now.
Yeah, it's going to be under NFPA, which is adopted by the New Hampshire State Codes. So, the only thing we do is amend locally to town.
Without having researched the question, I suspect that you're right, but either way, I don't know if it's the will of the board to even meet that question, because I don't know if there's support for the idea of waiver. Vinnie?
I'm going to agree that, first of all, sprinklers is, yeah, it's going to be under the purview.
Turn your microphone on, Vinnie.
I agree that the sprinklers are going to be under the purview of the fire department. That's going to be an issue you'll have to deal with if we give you the approval, as well as the egress. That's building department. That's not site plan issue, so we can't grant you that. We can just give you an approval if we feel that the site is appropriate for the use.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'm comfortable with the parking regulations doing the waiver for two parking spots on the front, two in the back for each unit. You're going to be monitoring who's staying there, so you're going to, you know, you put rules on them that it's just two spots per occupant, so that's reasonable.
I don't think that there'd be any on-street parking on Daniel Webster Highway, because I don't think it's allowed there, and whether you could do it on Pine Street next to, if you had extra people coming over. I mean, Vinnie, have a question?
I did have a question about the parking. I see that one of the spaces is access. Sorry, thank you. I see that the access, you have one from Pine Street, that's an open curb cut, I'm assuming? And then there's a curb cut going on to Daniel Webster Highway, is that correct?
That's the front driveway, and then the rear driveway has another curb cut on Pine Street.
Further down Pine Street, there's a second cop.
I'm talking for the front of the building, not for the rear.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Just for the front. The only thing I would have issue with is the parking space that's accessed through the Daniel Webster Highway. I have a real issue with cars having to back out onto that street. And somebody will do it, so that would be a problem for me.
I think the fire department had an issue with the proximity of the Pine Street cut to the corner as well, but I think at some point you recognize it is what it is in terms of what you can fit on that lot. If you don't give them the front parking spaces, they don't have any ability to do what they're doing.
But to some extent, Mr. Chairman, the front, the one on Daniel Webster and the one on Pine, they exist. They're existing, but I don't like them.
Yeah, if I may.
I don't like, I don't love them either, but...
Well, if I may, I guess my recommendation as a site plan approval would be to eliminate the access onto Daniel Webster Highway so that the cars are forced to at least go out on Pine Street, a much less traveled road, so there's less incidence of an accident.
I understand your recommendation. I think if that's the will of the board, I wouldn't support that. I would say that it's existing and it's worked the way that it's done, but it certainly, as a proposal, as an idea, if that's the way the board wants to go, it's an opportunity to do that. I think that making it a circular driveway is an important bit of the safety, because otherwise, no matter what you do there, you've got to back out a car, and you don't have the ability to pull through in one direction. And you would have cars stacking and... Mike?
I just wanted the applicant to just talk a little bit about the area that is to the west. It's a raised area. Is there pavement? Is there any use of that area that this parcel has?
The area to the, meaning where the pizza restaurant is?
Yeah.
Well, the area on the other side, obviously, is used for parking. There's a wooden, like a stockade-like fence along the edge of the parking area.
And then what about further to the left of that, going towards the pizza shop? There's still, that's on the property, correct?
So, yes, next to the two-story wood frame house, there's the edge of pavement, then there's a stockade fence, and then there's that area grass up until the...
Yes.
Okay, up until the retaining wall.
Gotcha. Okay. So, there's no means to be able to park cars or use that space for some other reason?
No, at the moment, sir, it's elevated. It's probably about three and a half to four feet high behind that retaining wall, so there's no way to get up there presently. And it's a flat area there behind the, in the area between the stockade fence and the edge of the concrete retaining wall.
Okay, thank you.
So then, and then, in addition to that couple of feet up, the parking lot for Merrimack House of Pizza, there's another couple of feet up, isn't it?
Yes, it's been recommended that we give the occupant of Merrimack House of Pizza an easement. Since Mr. Dulamas owns both sides, I don't think he can give himself an easement, since he owns the, what we call a superior estate in each.
Yep.
But he could probably give a license, as far as parking goes, to the occupant of the Merrimack House of Pizza, which is a separate owner for Mr. Dulamas.
I think that one of the solutions that we've had in a situation like this in the past is to have a note added to the plan that just says, if these two parcels ever are divided into separate ownership, then at that time, an easement would be brought into existence. Would that be okay with you guys if you did that?
Yeah, that would be a good solution, sir. Thank you.
But you're right, obviously, from a legal standpoint, you can't have an easement over your own property. Are these both held personally, or is either one of them in a trust or a limited liability company or anything like that?
Both personally, sir.
Okay, so, yeah, you definitely couldn't do an easement. But it may make sense just to put a note. I forget what the wording is. We had the lawyers, Matt Upton drafted something that fit this situation years ago, that just said that if the two parcels are ever split into separate ownership, then an easement would be provided to cover that overlap.
I think that was, Mr. Chairman, I think that was when Buckley's took over the shop, which was previously owned by Swan Chocolates. When Buckley's took that over, that's when the piece of, the last time we saw that piece of legal ease, and I'm sure that could be copied, because they have an easement to cross again. Was it?
Yeah, we've done it a lot longer, earlier than that, too.
Oh, well.
With someone who came before us already in common ownership. But I don't remember what it was. We could figure that out. It's not that hard to write a sentence that accomplishes that goal, too.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board? What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request for waiving full site plan review?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the applicant's request to have a waiver of full sites review, and at that point, take into consideration that the note from Robert Price suggested that if, as we are approving that, we don't have to have a sidewalk waiver, because we're not changing the detail.
Okay.
Says that the waiver is, it is unnecessary with a waiver of full site review, and I would say we're doing it on the basis that strict circumstances relevant to the subdivision or conditions indicate the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation.
What waiver are you talking about?
Waiver of full site plan review.
And with it going.
And an accommodation that sidewalks are not needed.
Needed because of that.
Lynn seconded that motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to grant full site plan review and determine that sidewalks are not necessary. What's the board's, will of the board with respect to the applicant's request for a parking waiver?
I'll move to grant parking waiver.
Move by Ms. Christensen to grant the parking waiver to allow six where eight are ordinarily required. Second by Desiree, fault?
On the basis that strict conformity would propose unnecessary hardship.
Correct.
Okay.
So, why are eight required? Because the upper apartment has more bedrooms, or?
Yeah, that's just the formula. The upper apartment has three bedrooms, and then there's the two studios downstairs for a total of five. The actual parking calculation comes out to be 1.25 spaces per bedroom plus half a space per dwelling unit. So, that comes out to, the total of five plus three for the eight, well, 7.75 to round up to eight.
I mean, there's been a lot of question about the two in the front serving the upper story, as to whether that's sufficient or appropriate. And I guess for three bedrooms, there's a question as to whether two is enough. Like you said, any visitors would have to park on the street, be ready, and that's problematic in that area. I don't know how he would get more spaces in there, but he's cramming a lot into a small space to begin with.
No question. I guess he could put more visitors in this back parking area that's paved, because these four spaces aren't the limit of pavement. That's just where they've designated some parking spaces, but Lynn?
What about an agreement with the House of Pizza to allow visitors to park in that lot?
Your microphone's not on, but I think that, you understand the suggestion?
You understand the suggestion?
Yeah.
That may be a good way to do it, because I think from a practical sense, you're never going to need those spaces, but on paper, you've got the connection to allow people to use it if they need to.
And you have control of it anyway.
Even right now, most of the visitors, they park at the Merrimack House of Pizza parking lot, and then they just walk over.
So, they're already doing it?
But they grab a slice first, right?
They get some pizza first.
But if that could be noted?
Would that be acceptable to your client?
The note would say that any excess parking for the lot we're talking about, 565, would have to park at the adjacent lot, which is 563?
Not necessarily that they would have to, but they'd have the ability to if necessary or desired.
Yeah, certainly. That's reasonable.
I mean, we can't force somebody to park their car anywhere, because we're not going to police that, but...
You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So, we would waive eight to six with a note that says additional parking could be available at the House of Pizza.
563, yeah.
I guess the problem I have with that is, right now, while it's under common ownership, so we're not talking about doing an easement, but we have common ownership of both lots. So, he can get some sort of agreement. If that second lot is ever sold off, then what happens to the?
Then you reserve yourself an easement.
Yeah, we can do that the same way we did the other easement.
At that point, you would have to do an easement.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on the sidewalk waiver? So, we've got a motion...
Parking.
Parking waiver, I'm sorry. Any other comments or questions on the parking waiver? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to grant a parking waiver to allow six spaces instead of eight with a note that says additional parking may be available at the pizza shop. What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request to waiver sprinkler requirements? I tend to agree with the conversations that I'm not sure it's within our jurisdiction to do so, but even if it was, I would not necessarily be in support of it. And so, there's, if it's the will of the board to vote against the waiver request, it really doesn't matter whether it was in our jurisdiction or not. We didn't change that situation, because we didn't do it. But I'm not suggesting that as a way to campaign for which way the vote ought to go, if you're in favor of the applicant's waiver request.
Well, at the same, you also don't have anything in writing either, which is what the board likes to require for waiver requests.
Although we've been rather flexible with that particular rule in the past. Vinnie?
I guess I would just suggest that if we approve the site plan to let the applicant have to deal with the fire department and the building department as required, that's out of our purview. I think even voting on it is just, is a futile effort.
We don't need to.
I think that you could make an argument that we don't need to, since it's not within our jurisdiction, or you could make an argument to say it doesn't hurt anything to vote one way or another.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should actually have a motion to specifically deny the waiver request. I will make the motion for the purposes of us doing that, making a decision on the applicant's request for a waiver. We've never not given, listened to somebody's waiver, and we've never not voted, in my experience. So, I make a motion that we, that the applicant has requested a waiver and leave it to the board to make a decision.
Okay, I don't understand your motion there at the end. You're confused.
I do.
You're making a motion to deny the waiver.
I'm making a motion to deny the waiver.
Okay, is there a second for Alistair's motion not to grant the waiver? Desiree?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I, please, please, the board withdraw my request for a waiver of the Fire and Safety Code?
Okay. Certainly the applicant's privilege of doing that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Don't worry. Mr. Chairman, accordingly, then, I think we should, oh, sorry, public opinion.
That would render the vote moot. And so, with that, we'll table that motion, or we don't have to ever address it.
We never got it.
Public opinion. Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in before the board considers final action on this application? None? Is anybody back there?
Somebody be announced.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion by the board with respect to final action on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant final approval to this request for the, Mr. Nicholas Dulamas, based on the memo of Robert Price sent to us on dated July 25, 2016.
Subject to all the conditions in it?
Subject, yeah.
To all the conditions.
The conditions that were added tonight about the, adding the notes about an easement in the future.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Both with respect to the retaining wall and the parking spaces.
Right.
Is there a second for Alistair's modified motion? Desiree, it's a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I'm sorry, one opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. 610 with Mr. Russo opposed. You are approved. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board, for the privilege of appearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, item four on our agenda is Juliana Davidson of Portofino Italian Restaurant, LLC as the applicant, and Pamela Courier, co-trustee of Orin Cornell 1993 Trust as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review of outdoor restaurant seating, the parcels located at 458 DW Highway, Unit 6, in the C2 General Commercial, and Oxford Conservation and Town Center Overlay Districts, tax map 5D-4, Lot 54. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
The only thing I have to add to this is, during our phone call yesterday, you had asked for information about what the parking requirements would be for the site, if it was based on current regulations, and the only one I couldn't calculate was for the Domino's Restaurant, because it's based off employees and I don't have that information. But that number came out to be roughly 245 for the site. The waiver that was granted is about 254.
254? I thought it was 270 something.
No, they reduced it because of the new regs.
The original calculation, pre-waiver, when CVS was built, was for 328, I think it was, and it was reduced to 254 by the waiver.
Oh, okay. 72. And they, under present-day regulations, it would be 245, even including the?
245 minus whatever Domino's would have, but it wouldn't be much. So, basically, you're looking at, right about the 254 number, probably a little less.
So, that even with these added seats, we're not having a parking problem on the site review? Should, based on the indefiniteness of the Domino's requirements, should we consider granting a waiver of parking, or should we determine that it's not necessary, or take no action on parking at all, or how should we approach that?
Not really any action on parking, because she's, it's basically just a reaffirmation of the waiver. I don't know how you want to word that, but it's a really affirmation of the waiver that was already granted to allow less than whatever the required parking was. So, she's adding the six to eight additional seats, so I guess.
So, if we ultimately come to a motion to approve this, if we say that we approve it and determine that no additional parking is necessary, that would cover us?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Okay, if that's the way we end up going. Anything else? Please introduce yourself, if you've signed in already, and then tell us what you got proposed.
Juliana Davidson from Portofino Italian Restaurant. I just want to add six or eight outside door seatings for the restaurant. That's pretty much just for the summertime, because I've seen a lot of people that would like to have dinner, sorry, lunch, outside, and they walk in and they're like, "Oh, it's so nice to have outside, so maybe you should try that."
What are you thinking in terms of the tables? Are they going to be?
It's a small table. I ask, I think Diane Siemens, I don't know if she sent a picture of the table.
Check the file, but I don't believe I've seen it.
It's just the two tops, pretty much like this big, so two people could sit. It would be like two, four, six tables, six seatings. That's only for the lunchtime, 11:30 to 4:00.
Okay. In terms of our regulations, if we approve them, you could use them any time during your business. We wouldn't have any kind of a... We wouldn't have any kind of a person out there controlling a timer to say you could use them now but not later. So if they're there, you can use them. The two-person per table, would you be going for six or... Just trying to get an exact number on exactly what you're asking.
Six or eight, depending how good we get, like how good the business gets. If you think we can add one more, then we would add one more.
Okay. We should probably then approach this as a request for eight because otherwise, if we say six, then that's what you get.
Yes.
And for what it's worth, I did all my calculations based off of eight.
Okay, so all the calculations are based off of eight?
Eight tables and two?
Uh, no.
No.
Four tables and two.
Four tables and two.
Four new seats. How wide is the sidewalk in front of your place that you're going to put these on? Do you know?
I don't have a tape measure, but if you don't mind.
Eight feet.
Mr. Chairman, would it help if I actually red bent my stubborn?
That's, that would be tables right there.
Okay. Let me get you back by a microphone so people at home can hear you. Do you feel comfortable that there'd be room enough for the tables and for people to walk by if they're going past your place or for your servers to move around?
Yeah, I've done the simulation, I think. I had actually somebody next to me that it's a little bigger to walk through. It should be fine.
How many seats do you have inside the restaurant?
One seven, 169.
You have 169 inside?
Wow.
Good for you guys. I hope you are busy enough that you have people that want to sit outside, too.
You should come try out.
I've been there. Been to your place plenty of times. We're regular customers. So Alistair did actually take a look at your sidewalk. You want to provide the information that you gathered?
Yeah, I went out there. The sidewalk is approximately eight foot wide. It is of a concrete construction, which is approximately two inches above the paved parking area. And that's something I want to remind, remember in a second. There's a roof overhang. The overhang is supported by 18-inch square pillars, giving a good six foot, six inches clear walkway. That's between their building and, if you like, the inside face of a pillar. The pillars themselves are protected by the usual concrete-filled vertical steel tubes, but it would be possible for a car to ram the building if driven between the pillars, and this is what I'm concerned about. The concrete surface is very rough with small potholes. I hope you get tables that won't wobble because I hate having to put napkins under the tables. There are two four-foot wide granite benches there, which I assume would disappear. My only concern, and I think this would work, is I think we have to request some sort of safety barrier to stop cars. A car driven without care by somebody could easily come through between the pillars and ram the restaurant, which in fact has happened in that area. Not specifically the restaurant, but just down, fairly part, close by in that concept, in that marketing area. So I think we have to ask for some proper granite stopping curb to be required to protect your eaters and your servers. Otherwise, I think it will work very nicely, but you've got to make certain that nobody can drive through and ram somebody. I think on grounds of safety, the two-inch rise between the walkway surface and the paving is so small and it's very rounded, nothing will stop a car there at the minute. If somebody wants, if somebody treads on the accelerator instead of the brake, they're going to hit the restaurant wall.
You're saying like the wheel stops, the classic wheel stops, right?
Things like, CVS has got them just down, just down there. I want the same things as CVS has got. Something to stop the cars going over.
So, so you're looking for like... It will aid in, yeah.
It's no guarantee, but it will do a lot better than nothing.
SUV can definitely go right over it, but it's important and we should definitely encourage that, yes.
That's my suggestion.
So it would be six, six to eight of them, roughly?
You understand what it is that he's talking about?
Yes.
Those little concrete things in front of the parking lot?
Don't look at CVS, I want the same things in front of the...
Probably seventy-five bucks each, you know, they're pretty cheap.
Clarification. Alistair, are you recommending those curb stops just be put where the seating is?
Well, given that if you, if they're going to put in four tables, they'd probably, they're going to cover the full width.
However they determine to do it.
Yeah, but it's, I want them protected so that if, wherever the tables are, I want there to be curb stops.
That's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
Yes.
But decide if they don't put tables on the far side, you're not worried about it.
Then I'm, that's their decision, but it must be where there are people sitting and servers are serving food.
Thank you.
I would say for clarity, we just sort of designate which parking spaces we're talking about and say one, two, three, four, five, put curb stops here.
The six to the left, like including the handicap space and the six to the left of that where she's in front of the tables.
Well, there's only four to the left of that, but okay.
It's an easy enough thing to do. Why don't you just put them in front of all the spaces in front of them?
I think Ms. Davidson understands what I'm concerned about and she's got the interest of protecting her staff and her customers anyway.
No, I'm sure she'd do a good job of that. I'm just trying to be specific enough so that the people trying to make, find out whether she did what she's supposed to do can tell what we have.
So all of the spaces in front of her restaurant.
I think all spaces in front of the restaurant.
Yeah.
Okay.
The five spaces.
That way you can move the tables around as you see fit and we're not worried about it.
Yep, that works.
Other comments or questions? So the first order of business for the planning board is to determine whether we've got enough information to make a decision on this and although it is a limited proposal, it still requires a determination that we find it complete.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Accepted. Accepted as complete.
Oh, we're accepting, I was ready for a waiver. Sorry, we accept it.
Substantially complete.
Second, sorry, yeah.
There you go. Is there a second for Desiree's motion that the application's substantially complete? By Lynn Christensen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to determine it's complete. So we've got a request for a waiver of full site plan review, which seems to make an awful lot of sense to me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant a waiver of full site plan review.
Motion and second to waive full site plan review. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the basis that the specific conformity would prove an unnecessary hardship to the applicant.
There we go. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to grant the waiver of full site plan review. Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? There is a letter that was supplied to me from Christopher Ross, who is the owner of Synergy Self-Storage in support of the application and speaking in glowingly positive terms about the restaurant, the business, the additional benefits of having the sidewalk seating and all of that. And so that would be entered into the record. With that letter in the record and no other citizens wished to weigh in, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board with respect to final action on this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant final approval to Mr. Davidson on the basis of the memo from Robert Price dated July 26, 2016, along with the minute, the notes that I provided to the board members, particularly relevant to the concrete curb thing.
Okay, so motion to approve, subject to the conditions in the memo, plus five wheel stop.
As long as we call it wheel stops, yeah.
Wheel stops.
Yeah, not curb.
Sorry, it's wheel stops.
Yeah, very specific.
Wheel stops. Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second. You're still an alternate tonight. Let's get a second.
Sure, I'll second.
A second by Lynn. Lynn Christensen. All right, there's a motion and a second to grant final approval, subject to all the conditions, plus the installation of wheel stops. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. You're approved.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, thank you. Okay. Item five on our agenda is a continued public hearing. For zoning ordinance amendments, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to consider recommended amendments to Section 2.02.1 and Section 17, the Merrimack Zoning Ordinance pursuant to RSA 675.6 and 675.7. This agenda item is continued from our July 19 meeting and the staff has requested that we move to continue this to our next August 16 meeting. And that was done in order to accommodate Tim's participation in the national night out.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and second to continue to August 16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. Item six on our agenda is a zoning ordinance amendment workshop, which is also to be continued to our August 16 meeting but does not require a motion to do so because it's not a public hearing. And so we will entrust the staff to make that change to the agenda. Item seven is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern to discuss? Seeing none, we are at approval of the minutes of July 19, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
Make one note. Is there a second for the motion to accept the minutes as printed?
Second.
Second by Desiree Fault.
With comments.
What's that?
With comments.
With comments, let's have them.
Yeah, I got a couple of them. Page five, line 36. Meaning 200 to 300 feet excavation, I think that might be square, square feet. I just want to check the measurements on that because it doesn't seem quite right to me. It said, said a 25-foot by 25-foot foundation and a 10-foot by 16-foot for equipment are needed, meaning 200 feet to 300 feet excavation.
Yeah, I think it should be square feet.
And then maybe clarification on item 38 where it says the cranes would bring in the equipment. The cranes are going to erect the equipment, but if we're saying it's straight, that's my suggestion to that one. Page six, item 11, the very, very last sentence right there. Tim said the sentence prior to that and it says, "A fall zone is an outdated regulatory idea." I just want to make sure that we know that that's implied that Tim is saying that as it's an outdated regulatory item.
So this is how Tim indicated at the beginning of that sentence?
Yeah, that would be good. And that's it. Those are my big question or corrections.
Anybody else have any comments? Michael?
If you just please add me to present members.
Wants credit for his attendance.
I'm mentioned in here, so it'd be kind of weird.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approval of the minutes of July 19 as amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstained.
Two abstains. Mr. Russo, Mr. Koenig. Is that correct? Got that right? Five oh two to approve the minutes. They are approved. With that, we are at... Five, four, five in favor?
And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second for the motion to adjourn? Second by Ms. Christensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Don't forget to turn your microphone off and thank you very much.